From my perspective, the plan of conservation and development and public input is consistently showing a desire for development and revitalization on Bain Street. And one of the things that we understand is that housing is key to doing this. You have people in the area and where for that to happen. We have had some interest, the city planner, I think it was from developers, who, you know, would like to explore building multifamily housing in the general commercial zone. We also know that multifamily housing is a local and a regional need. So it seems like there are a lot of things that kind of come together to indicate that, you know, it might be worth looking at if there's something we can do in our general commercial zone to encourage that type of activity. So that's sort of the background. Leslie had been working on a rewrite of the regulations for the general commercial zone. She and I met a couple of months ago and talked about was there, you know, a way to do this that was maybe a little less comprehensive, but, you know, might be easier to focus the discussion on like the type of changes that might actually help encourage that. So encourage that type of development. So anyway, that's, okay, this is the background from my perspective. Paul, do you have anything you want to add to that?
No, that was great. And they, just so when you all got, if anybody doesn't have it, they'll have your copy. But we were all emailed, happy with what those changes have proposed. 4.3 GC on the page. And anything underlined is supposed to be added. Anything that is struck out, it's very, it's basically last page. So the very last two pages are being swapped now. One said, if you want regulations for another. It's adding, quickly it's adding, being able to have multifamily go up four stories as as a site plan and then up to six stories with special permit. The it's just adding those uses that they want.
And it, well, also, I mean, it also changed the wording on one section about the excuse development.
Yeah.
Where we, you know, we had, we used to say that you only have two dwelling units in a, in a
Correct.
building in the general commercial zone. So we eliminated that wording and added, they have mixed use buildings up to four stories.
I don't believe that section on residential units on the first floor was included in this zone.
I didn't have a prescription on removing. So the underline is for adding or subtracting?
Adding, in alliance with the strike crews, which is only the very last page.
But we don't have anything written on the details right now.
The, there's nothing to be added. What's added, what is to be added, is added and underlined. It's very basic. There's not a lot here. But it does That's everything. It's very basic. There's not a lot here, but it does give me the
Right.
There's something else that anybody wants to add or change.
No, I'm just confused with the fact that we have a section for multifamily dwellings up to four stories. And then we have another section for multifamily dwellers five or six stories.
It's actually another section. I'm sorry. It's actually not another section. It's number 21 of the section eight four.
Based on whether you need just a site plan or a site plan and a special permit.
Yeah, the five or six stories will require a special permit, but four stories would be just a site. Well, would come before the commission.
Let's just use.
See how that's 20 number 21.
Hmm.
Now it's 20.
That's expected.
Right, of the same, no, not at the same as this list goes here.
Okay. So I think the current wording of that of in section 4.3.8 is it says mixed use buildings containing dwelling units and permitted businesses and services provided, this is an, this is approved uses. Provided business and service uses excluding offices should only be permitted on the first floor and or basement levels. And then this is the, and no mixed building shall contain more than two dwelling units. That, that language has been into the part of all. No mixed building shall contain more than two dwellings. That's because that was, that was causing difficulty in terms of developing property in that, in that area, developers. We've been approached by, I think, a couple of people about changing that. So that's, those are the, so basically for the, for a site plan, we would add that you could have a multi-family dwelling up to four stories or a mixed use building up to four stories. That, that as long as the businesses that would be in that building were permitted and were permitted uses in that under this section. So if it's a, anything that was allowed in the, in the section, it would be those type of businesses could be in that, in that room. So.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
And it may be, it was late when I was doing this, but I'm trying to understand why, if you can have a multifamily dwelling unit up to four story without having to have any businesses there, why would somebody go through applying for a mixed use permit with four stories and having fewer apartments? Shouldn't that be, I guess my question was, shouldn't that be a different number of stories? Otherwise, just go for the four stories of the multifamily.
Well, that's, that's what it sounds to both, to both options. You could just have a multifamily of four story. Or you could have a four story building that's multifamily and mixed use.
So.
You don't have to have a commercial.
It's the same permit. But I guess my question is, why would somebody go through the effort of getting that lot designated mixed use? If they don't have to get designated, it's, if it's in the GC zone, it's already, it is what it is. Okay.
I understand.
Yeah.
Yeah, the mixed use piece was only if you're mixing.
And a couple others.
Sure, go ahead. No, please, that's good, that's all.
I, I would like to ask on behalf of the entire commission that when you send these out, if you could just have the date put in the path at the bottom so that really I go and look at my send at home and I've got like five copies. And I'm not sure which is the one that's
You mean the file side of it?
Yeah. The path at the bottom. And I, it's, yeah, okay. Yes. Yeah, just for the settings and put date in it. It'll automatically update the date. In number 14, when it says the last line is or special about their permitted subject to approval by staff. We need to define what staff? Who's staff? No, we have one staff. Well.
We can absolutely find it.
Well, the only reason I'm asking is like up in 4.3B.
Put city, we'll just put city plan.
Principal uses permitted by zoning building permit staff. So is it the building department or is it only?
Wait, where are you? I was using a comparison to 4.3.8.
Yeah.
How it shows the title that it's permitted by zoning slash building permit staff.
But isn't that
Yeah, with the building.
So is that staffing either or, or has been and usually down here. So we put just, yeah. Yeah, that actually shouldn't be in here anyway, because we don't have the authority to give that responsibility to somebody who is not part of the building, part of the planning department.
Okay.
Good catch. The other thing I had questions about was in the number 20, microbrewing. They would have the right to ask for their output or is that controlled by the written out follow-up study? I'm just thinking if they have to comply with one.
Yeah.
Yeah.
There's not a point. There's the point.
Well, I mean, I think, or just, I think when we added, when that was added, I think that was the a line between what would be the commercial activity, what an activity in the commercial room versus the industrials.
Okay.
Like there was, it was larger than that, then it becomes a, you know, industrial
Piling assembly or whatever.
So I think that was the, why that was put in.
Where did we come up with the figure for 2,000 square feet?
For my time.
And the 10,000 barrels or whatever, does that handcuff, handcuff us or?
It, it may, I'm not sure.
I remember there being a discussion about that when on Bridge Street. They were looking to put that distillery in the dentist office that it was.
It's downstairs, I think it's full and I don't see assignment there anyway.
I think that's when we had a discussion about it coming up in development. I mean, we're talking years ago. I really don't remember. But, but with the way the they're written compared to the way they're written on the other side, it's like one side says you gotta do it this way and the other side says you gotta do it backwards. But I think they're saying the same thing in the stuff when I was reading it was confusing.
Yeah, that, that same information is, it looks like it's in two places. It's also in the permitted accessory building structures and uses.
Yeah, I, I guess I'm thinking a lot. We're, we're trying to encourage people to come for entertainment, for night out dinner, whatever. Whether that restriction of 3,000 square feet as well as the, their model production that they can produce. Whether or not that's discouraging other people to possibly come to the area.
Well, my question on that, when I read it was, how does that compare to what the Outer Banks has?
Well, see, that's why I asked, where, where do those figures come from?
Yeah.
And we should say like, I guess grandfather from previous.
The Outer Banks one is grandfather?
No, those, that 3,000 square feet, where did that, where did that number come from?
I would like to, you know, and this is probably a good thing to earn a lot of people here is to kind of get to bring these things out so that when we put a whole group of them, we want to vote on it, then at least we've got
Yeah. No, that's why we're having.
So just, just for one, one point, Mr. Rice tried to call at 6:50. So.
All right, how's everybody?
We're doing well. We're looking at the, we're looking at the proposed regulatory changes to general commercial zone.
Right. Yeah. Sorry for being late. I got hung up somewhere.
I have to have you. I mean, one with the, with the outer light situation is, they were, they, they were, when they originally applied, there were, it was not allowed use in the general commercial zone. So they ended up in the industrial in an industrial zone because that was the only thing that was available to them under the regulations at the time. But then it, you know, it was, became like as clear from what was happening in other communities that, you know, it might be appropriate to put a business, a business like that allowed in the general commercial zone as long as it wasn't, you know, going to be like a Anheuser Busch factory. You know, that was, I think that's where we. I haven't seen, I haven't seen the updated, no, I haven't seen that.
Are, are they at 3,000 square feet?
Don't know what they're, they sound. I would hate to have it say 3,000 and there are 7,000 and, and somebody's like, oh. Why are you limiting me? I'm not so impressed.
Well, I mean, you know, the one thing is they're, 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 well, I guess at the time that was an industrial zone. Is it, is it still IT or is it not commercial?
That's just.
That's GC now. But it was, at one time it was, it was an industrial zone down there. That's all.
So are they, are they complying with this?
As far as I know, I don't know. They haven't come in brand.
I know they're tight down there as far as their brewing. Well, I mean, that's kind of the question. They were, if they're plotted out under requirements that were okay when it was an industrial zone. But they're over 25% of production, you know, versus the rest of the use of the facility and they're over 3,000 square feet.
Yeah, they wouldn't have been able to expand without coming back.
True.
So.
But if they were way over to begin that, and it's own change, could they be okay to tell them that?
They would be grandfathered in.
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's essentially correct. I mean, they're, they're grandfathered in, they don't have to. But it would be interesting to know if.
Just for
Yeah, I mean, just, you know, and that would be interesting information if they're willing, they want to share the, you know, the production numbers. What, you know, would they? Because if, because if we would be excluding someone, a business like that, you know, they probably don't want to do that. That's kind of where, that's where.
A new business into the same zone.
Right.
Right, you know?
Right. You wouldn't want to necessarily exclude something like that.
They do here, right? Because I, I do remember there being something about the ABC that for the state had certain guidelines as to how many they could produce. And I think that's where the numbers came from.
But, but I, I think it would be fruitful for us to have that information in our pocket. Certainly for us, because, you know, if another business came, came forward and wanted to compare what they were able to do.
Right, sure. And I think also if, you know, a conversation with them to see if that's working. You know, maybe.
I'll be happy to go there. You gotta go with him.
Because you're going to be talking overall for beer. But again, going back to my original comment, with the fact that we're trying to encourage
Right.
Businesses like that, because the younger people wouldn't look like this. There are other areas in the general commercial that could fit.
Yeah. Yep. And, and you don't hear many complaints, you know, you, I don't hear about these going down there and you can sit down with a really good business owner.
I have a question for you. The restriction on two dwelling units in the commercial, the general commercial zone. Where was that and how would it get erased or? Is that as a page in that we have problems? Well, without me taking a field trip, I was just going to say if it's, it's somewhere in the paragraphs. The only, the only place in the six pages that we have, maybe there's anything struck out.
Yeah.
Is on the last page.
Right.
Setbacks and whatnot.
Right.
Yeah. If, if it had been in a prior paragraph that we had in front of, and you modify the line and say, I would, I would think just for continuity, it'd be better to have the original portion there and so I, I don't know that it's in here. I'm not finding where it would be there.
It's in, it's in 4.3.8.
D eight, D eight.
He's in the December 1st, 2016 version that I'm looking at.
Okay.
The
So D eight would have, would have made the provision for maximum two dwelling.
D eight currently says, it has the no mixed building shall contain more than two dwelling units.
But on the, is that on the electrified version? The, the amended version said mixed use buildings containing dwelling units and permitted businesses and services up to six stories.
Yeah, I'm not sure what happened with that. I totally agree with you and it's usually how I do it is with the strike.
What was that number again? Four, four point what? Okay.
Anybody want to go? When I was reading this and I got to 21 multifamily dwellings and then I wasn't really paying attention to the numbering and lettering and reading the permitted, the stuff involving or want to get to the next page and I'm thinking mixed use, don't think they're going to have the stories. Very thoughtful. This doesn't sound right. I know, I'm not sure what happened with this. I will get a clean copy with enough space between sections so that it's not confusing and clear that we're getting rid of the two dwelling units and putting the mixed use. Okay.
All right. Any other, any other comments, questions about anything?
You asked about the repetition of the microbrewing
instructions.
Where it appears in two different places.
Right. Right, it's, it's in 4.3.20.
Right, and that point three, that go.
Right, five.
I
Is it accessory building structure and use under accessory building structures and use?
There was a, there was a, a error. Anyway. I would say.
Is there anything out there that? With other towns in the state, as far as their requirements, footage, output.
For.
That readily available for the.
I can definitely.
I don't know, C C M.
I was gonna say C C M, I can put something on the listserv. And ask, but what I'd be most. Curious about would be state stat.
Cause I, I've been to through a few microbrewers who are around multi floors. And I'm looking at some of the buildings that we have that might. Be encouraging for, for developers. Like that.
Yep.
Maybe C C M has something fine, that would be great if it did.
Any, any, any other questions, comments, uh, Mr. Rice?
Yeah, I do, thank you, I, I apologize, I wanted to be there in person because it's kind of hard to, to hear. And I have more global comments than individual comments, um, first of all, I, I see that you put in the four story. Or the six story with the retail, I assume, at least in the draft, that there'll be some type of geographic limitation as far as how that goes. And with the last conversation we had was that, okay, the six story doesn't make sense in certain areas, um. So I, I wonder how that was gonna be handled?
So, so I think they, well, was he wanted, I mean, what, what we, what we, what we do is put the six store, the five and six stories in as a, as a special permanent requirement, so. Um, we would have some discretion about where the, where those were located.
So it's not gonna be limited geographically, I mean. The, I, I, there may be an issue about doing that in the same zone, but it's not gonna be limited geographically, so theoretically could do it anywhere in the zone.
If, if with special per, with the special permit approval, they, they couldn't wait.
Yes, no, no, I get that, yeah, yeah. Um. All right, so, I, I, I've got, I've got some real global, uh, concerns, um. I mean, the, 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 this, the whole idea with the six story, which, which I. As I voiced before, I think is inappropriate really anywhere in this, in the area that's being described here, um. But I, I don't know what the impetus for it is, the, the. There, there's a pretty good amount of affordable housing in the city, there's, there's a lot of condos and rentals and. Single family homes that have been, uh, converted into two, three, four, five, up to six from my observation. Um, so, so there's a lot of, a lot of housing opportunities in, in, in the city. Um, if it's being done for. E B's expansion, I don't know how that really benefits the city because. You know, we, we, we talked about it at the last meeting, I mean, E, E B doesn't seem to have any interest in being involved in housing, parking. Uh, beautification and so forth, so I guess the answer is if, if you're looking at creating more. Housing opportunities, why is the city doing that? Um, the, the thought perhaps being that that'll be some incentive to. Uh, create some type of, uh, growth in the business district, which would be wonderful. But I haven't seen any, any plan or any, um. Any way that that's gonna be accomplished other than, than hope. And then, and then the negatives, or, or at least the issues that are unresolved, I mean. Where, where I practiced for forty-five years, they had something called the State Environmental Quality Review Act, when you would do. Um, a significant, uh, zone change, you would have to do. An environmental impact statement, which would consider such things as the aesthetics. Uh, potential traffic, because if, if, if you create a bunch of six-story buildings, what's the impact on traffic, community services? Um, elevations as far as what it's gonna look like, so you have some idea of what the aesthetics are, um. So, so we haven't seen any of that, so I, 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 I just don't really. Get the, the incentive for the benefit of the community to be doing that.
Okay, so thank you, so, so, as I mentioned at the beginning of the discussion. There's the plan of conservation of development and consistent input from the community. Is identify Bain Street as an area that, that, that the community would like to see developed. And in order to get development on Bain Street, we need people, we need residents to live there to drive the development of the businesses. So we have had some interest from developers about developing certain, uh, parcels on Bain Street. And that what they, they would like to do is to, to put multi-family housing there. And that would be consistent with both the, the community's. Desire to see the area redeveloped and revitalized as well as the. Well-known need for this type of housing in the area, there's a, there's a tremendous housing shortage in southeastern Connecticut. And it's, it's actually quite acute in the city, um, in terms of. Housing that, um, apartments, one and two-bedroom apartments, there, there was a consistent, um, shortage of that type of house. So those, that's kind of the background of the story and how it would benefit the community and its residents. Um, and, and, and it's consistent with, again, with, uh, with. A lot of feedback that we had over the, over the years about where to focus our development activities. So that, so that's kind of the, that's the sort of the general plan. Now, I don't know anything about the requirements for environmental impact studies or anything like that. That's never come up in, in any discussion of regular authority changes that I'm aware. That's not a, so that's not a competitive acquiring.
But you, you mentioned Bain Street, development of Bain Street, but we're talking general commercial.
Correct.
And there's only two small sections of Bain Street that we have general commercial, right?
Yeah, it's up.
From Broad Street around to Bridge Street, and then I believe Leonard Avenue, uh, down to the intersection of Quonkett Road and Eastern Pointville. So. Those. There's a big, there's a tremendous amount of property that needs development in between those two areas. That wouldn't necessarily include those five, six-story buildings.
Right, and that's, and we, and we didn't, and we weren't gonna, and, and, and the way we were gonna approach that was not to, you know, when we. We look at the, because that, those are waterfront business residents.
Yes.
History, and we, we weren't going to, we, we currently don't allow, we. We're intending to allow five or six-story buildings to be built in that area, which is where, you know, there are. Significant number of single-family homes that are in smaller buildings, so. It was, that was one of the reasons we were focused in general commercial, because it was, you know, it was, there were fewer single-family homes in that area. And, you know, in fact, I, you know, one of the, one of the things that we had thought about briefly at one point was. Didn't even wanna allow a new single generally homes to be built there, and you never wanna make something that exists not conform to use, but at the same time, you know. It may not make sense to make, to, to have more single-family homes built on, you know, general commercials, but at, at any rate, that's a. That's how we were gonna, we were gonna try to control that. Plan was to control the bigger build, the, look, potentially larger buildings to the general commercial zone, not to the waterfront business. Residents zone.
So, so let, let me ask, if. Playing devil's advocate, I, you know, build it and they will come, where, where is the plan, other than the hope and the dream that if you build. Six-story buildings that you're gonna have, uh, additional commercial and, and, and development on Bain Street, which. I wish it would happen, but I mean, wh- wh- where is it, where is there any type of planning background to substantiate what, what will or won't happen?
What we know is that a market does not, right now, residential market does not exist. To build up the economic. Uh, a, maybe by one or two storefronts it would now, but to have a serious economic development. On Bain Street, we know we don't have the numbers. That is. We don't have the numbers. What we're trying to do is to develop. On one end of Bain Street. So that we've got housing where people can walk down Bain Street, walk to E B if that's where they work. Or to Pfizer, if that's where they work, or take a bike, so that we're limiting the effect on traffic and parking. Um, we are also just. In relation to another comment that you made before, we're not allowed to take aesthetics into account in Connecticut. None of the things that you, that you cited from New York are actually allowed, we're not allowed to do those things in Connecticut. State statute does not support it.
Well, I'm gonna, I'm gonna do some research on that, I don't know how you can, can allow the opportunity for six-story buildings. Without looking at, at, at the impacts on traffic, parking, aesthetics, and a lot of other things, I, it, it. Doesn't seem like it's been thoroughly thought out, how can you do that without understanding what the impacts of it are?
You, you can, I mean, you know, parking, of course, is, is regulated by our regulations.
I'm sorry?
Our parking is included in our regulation, so that would be part of the consideration, anything that was built would have to be consistent with the parking regulations.
Correct.
And in terms of traffic, we, we do typically ask for a traffic study, so that would be considered as well, but what, what is not part of the Connecticut. It, it was specifically outlawed in twenty, in twenty twenty-one, I believe, right? Was the aesthetics consideration.
Yeah, no, and I, I get that, we've had our, our noses rubbed in every time an applicant comes in and doesn't wanna deal with the issues. I mean, it's a relatively new thing, and I don't know if the ramifications are, are fully, uh. Thrashed out yet in the courts, but, um. I, I, again, I, I, I just don't, don't understand, um, that, that there's a fully thought-out philosophy behind this, or, 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 or the implications.
I did bring that article in last month regarding, um, how New London's downtown. Has been revitalized and all these new restaurants have come into town. Because of the additional apartments that are being built there, so it is a build it and they will come. I mean, it said right in there, you know, improvements. Make improvements, so, um. New, I'll send you the article if you missed it.
Other comments, questions from commissioners? So the. You know, and, and this is not, it's not like the city is gonna go and, and build these buildings, but I mean, this is gonna be based on the market. You know, this is a, this will be market-driven, it's a, it's a market, we live in a market economy, so in the United States, and so. If, if developers will, they're gonna, they're not gonna build something that's gonna, that's gonna be a let, like they're gonna, they're gonna build to what the market. Is demanding, and I guess from my understanding from. Discussion with Leslie is that this is what the market is looking to do, and when we've seen, certainly, New London's been, been pretty successful with it. Um, there's been a couple of big developments that have, you know, part of developments that have gone in there, there's, I mean, the, you know, the town is actually, it's approved one. Of, of by the old S U E school site recently as well, um, so, you know, it, it, there's a, there's a, there's a demand out there for it. And those fifty-seven hundred people that are gonna get hired this year at E B. Need places to live. Other questions, comments?
Yeah, let me just speak out on something, you brought it up, the fifty-seven hundred people. I know, the people have more privilege than anything else, but. It was brought up, I believe in a news article a few days ago. How many of those fifty-seven hundred are coming to Groton? How many are going to New London? How many are going to Quonkett Point? We use E B as a generic.
Sure.
But they have other facilities. If we were to get the entire, it'd be seven hundred, then I would say, wow. So I don't know if we're gonna overpopulate Groton, town and city. With housing facilities or apartments.
But we can control. We can control that, and one of the ways to control it is by number of stories, one of the ways to control it is by coverage of property, one of the ways to. There are lots of ways to control it, some of them are legal, some of them aren't legal, um, there are. What I can tell you is Sierra and I have been meeting the developers. I would say in the last, over a year, on average, if I would say one every two weeks. It's been maybe not quite that high, but more than once a month for sure, um.
And, and, and if, I guess if I was a developer and the media is indicating, look, there's going to be electric voters hiring. Round with off six thousand employees, I'd be a developer saying, yeah, boy, I'm gonna put some money into this. But if you took those numbers that I said and said somebody are going to New London, someone are going to Quonkett Point, what does a figure come down to that?
That's where they're working, what you're, what you're stating is where they would be working, the question is, do we wanna be able to take? Get some of the economic benefit.
Have them live in the city.
Exactly.
I mean, for example, Electric Boat operates a shuttle between Groton and New London, and Groton and, well, for the main, main shipyard of Groton and the King's Highway facility. Um, so people live adjacent to the Groton Shipyard, but take the bus to New London every day. So they don't live in New London, they live in Groton, and they, you know, live by bus, and vice versa, people live in New London and take the bus over here. So I, I would say conservatively, two-thirds of that hiring volume will go to the Groton Shipyard. Because there are fewer people required at Quonkett Point facility, and the New London and other Groton sites are very small by comparison. You know, tens rather than thousands, so the, the majority of the new hires, I, I think, are pretty certainly gonna be located at the main Groton Shipyard.
Right, that, that assembly building is, a lot, a lot of people will work there, if you're willing.
That also, that a few things about the housing for E B, I just wanna remind us that, yes, they're doing that new hire, but. There's also a bigger story that I think about forty percent of the workforce actually comes in, so there has been a big push. In the city and the town to get more of those, to find more available houses so those people don't have to do commute, if that is an interest of theirs, so. There's the new employees, but there's also the existing employees that may want to live a little bit closer, there's also been a major shift in, um. Our living arrangements just because of COVID and the push of, um, the remote work and working from home. We've seen a lot more people come to this area because they wanna be in a coastal community, so they can have, um. That quality of life will benefit and et cetera, and so we see more. Migration from New York, Philly, Boston area to this area, which is putting more. Migration from New York, Philly, Boston area to this area, which is putting more pressure on the housing of the needs and desire. And also, the Southeastern Connecticut Council of Governments did do a housing study. And they did this with an emphasis on electrical, but this was right. Before and kind of during COVID, so that kind of perspective has changed, but at least it shows that there was a housing crunch then. Now with COVID and all these other added factors, there's definitely more of a crunch that we're starting to feel there.
Thank you, Sierra. And I guess another exacerbating factor also is the number of homes in uh. In Mystic that are being converted to Airbnbs, which takes them out of the. New, the market for local families and resi- and residential use by low people in the local community, so. And I know that's, that's a very uh. Very high interest topic. For the, for the town, it's not, it's not a specific city problem, but. Uh, I know the town is is struggling to deal with that as well. So it's, I mean, there are, there are a lot of factors at play here, but but certainly, you know, but I I think. A lot of the, a lot of the things that are currently happening. Indicate that there's interest in this kind of development, and there's potentially an opportunity to do things that the. For the city to get some economic benefit, and also for, you know, for development on Thane Street. Where, which residents have been acknowledged for many years as a thing they'd like to see. So it's a, you know.
And I, I think we should be clear, we're not looking to, I don't think we have the land capacity or the infrastructure to house. Six thousand employees. Within the city. That's not the goal. The goal is to be able to get. To house some of them and to be able to build on that. Excuse me, use that bill, the economic demand. Within the city and build our, build our local economy. You're on mute, Terry.
All right, you you mentioned infrastructure. Do we have any idea if? Would the potential buildout of number of units are here and whether or not sewer and water capacity is uh up to it?
From a Groton utilities um standpoint, we have asked this question about other things. There are no concerns. At this time for the uh water or electric support um of additional buildings within the city of Groton.
And and that's, that's it, that's it. How many additional dwelling units?
I'm sorry?
Have they assessed how many additional dwelling units are conceivable under this and whether or not that analysis includes the number of? Units that might be built here?
I I don't wanna quote them, but the last discussion that I was party, uh party to, uh they expressed that. The sewage capacity right now is something like sixty or seventy percent. So with ten thousand residents, we are only at sixty percent of our sewage capacity now. That is, that capacity uh margin is diminished when we have heavy storms. But uh for normal use, if we're at the sixty percent mark. Uh even if you increase the population of the city by thirty percent, and we have the people moving at EB. You know, we we would still be with that margin. So I, I mean, we're not, we're not threatening uh. The sewer capacity at this time.
Yeah, I mean, that's good, but that that just kind of. Makes the point I was making before. Shouldn't we have all of this information available before anybody votes on? Uh zone change of this magnitude to to have an a- an analysis of all these types of things?
Those analyses are actually done when the P O C D is done. And our P O C D was just done a few years ago.
Well, but you're, you're asking the the commission to make a determination on its zone change. I think they should have all that information. Uh in front of them when they do this.
We would, we would still look at every proposal in terms of its impact on the, on the. Infrastructure, i- if the infrastructure could handle it or not, and if not. Then the, that project would have to be either scaled back or. Not approved, because we didn't have the infrastructure to handle it.
And you know, it's, it's, it's a lot more difficult to disapprove something. Once the zoning designation is in place, rather than looking at it before you rezone it.
All right. Other questions, comments? Thanks, Terry. Good to have your perspective. Um, and your questions? Um, I had, I just a couple of uh like uh. Were any things in four-point, three-point A? Um, we don't say anything about, I mean, purposes of general commercials, or should we add like something about? Any commercial and residential uses? Cause we're. Putting some focus on that. The uh. Section, so we talked about the uh four-point uh three. Point C, uh number fourteen, Agent Staff, the City Planner, right? On sixteen, I, um, the old, the old regulation about multi-story, I mean, multi-use buildings had. And that included that um. Requirement that the business and services could be the first floor only, to whatever. Contain that type of language, or it doesn't appear in that rewritten, right?
But yeah. I will, I will um. Put only with a straight through and. I'll get those to Nash.
Okay. Um, I mean, I guess it's just, just a, is a discussion point. We. We wanna limit them to first floor only, or do we wanna allow them to be anywhere in a building?
Which section are you in?
I mean, I mean, I mean, I mean, I'm, I'm talking about the.
Four-point three, what?
Four-point three. Like C sixteen, it's the. It, it um. It's a, it's a new, it's a new use, it's um. Not currently, it's a use that's not currently there, but we added, this is what was added, was mixed-use. Buildings containing dwelling units and permitted businesses and services up to four stories. The, when we had the mixed-use building regulation in four-point, three-point B, number eight. It said that the permitted businesses and services, provided they. It, provided they were, they were only be permitted on the first floor and or basement levels. And I was wondering if we wanted to retain that language, that limited. Businesses on the multi, you know, multi-use building to the first floor only, other than offices.
My concern with having businesses on second and third floor. If I'm living in that apartment complex, I don't want people in the hallways at night. Having access to get up there. I think, you know.
I think that becomes a more of a tenant. Owner issue. You could have, um, it's not uncommon on a second floor to have. Office, commercial offices, like attorneys, accountants.
Dentists, something.
Favorite underneath the piano, just what you want to hear.
I speak drill. Midnight dentist. Well, but I'm, the other, the other thing that just crossed my mind was rooftop restaurant. You know, you'd have to configure the building in such a way where, like you said, you wouldn't have. Restaurant patrons chasing by all the doorways perhaps, but that would be a. How is the building laid out, that sort of thing? And then if you were gonna rent, you would know. Restaurant, so. I I don't know that, I don't know that uh. I I would think that, you know, if we're, not to use the A word, aesthetics, but if we're, we're thinking about possibilities. That that limiting commercial spaces to the first floor might shackle us when faced with. Reasonable proposals.
And we would have the option when they came in. So yeah, we could pick up.
Yeah, you know, another thought. More businesses on the street side, more residences on the riverside, and you know, things like that that. Could be conceived, you know, we wouldn't necessarily want to have the.
Outside stairway to the.
Sure.
Express. All right, um. So those, those are my. That was a question I wanted to raise. Uh we talked about um the three thousand, three thousand square feet and ten thousand barrels, I guess. Is that an issue? And um I guess the, the other thing was, if we could go to the four-point, three-point F, the dimensional standards. So the, like the, the minimum, the lot area, four thousand square feet, that's no change. Residential density, like that wasn't in the.
That's never been a measure, we think.
Right.
But it, so this is. A recommendation, it is, you can also. Have it as a place over if you want to. The idea is that. You want a certain. You're building on a larger lot, that you would want. That larger lot to have, because the goal is to increase the residential. The number of residential units in the juicy zone. You wanna have that. Um, density. So, and it's a pretty big spread.
Yeah, but well, this guy, it shows a minimum of twelve dwelling units per acre and a maximum of six. Right?
Yeah.
So, I mean, which seems high, I don't know. But I guess.
It's.
You have to go long.
Right, right, and it's basically the amount that you're doing. Up to six. Take the twelve at five stories.
It's sixteen. Okay, so you have, you have twelve, twelve dwelling units on the floor.
You, you divide one acre by seven hundred square feet. That's one story, sixty-two minutes.
In an acre.
Seven hundred square feet, no parking, no setback.
So it's, it's not, I mean.
So it sounds big, but it's not really.
Right, okay, you stack them up, it's not over.
I would only question the twelve, actually, as a minimum. We went from the one to two to minimum twelve. You're nodding, but you wrote. Question application.
I think if you were to do, if somebody were to do something, it would give the, this would give somebody the ability to do. Big time houses, three-story townhouses. So. And you could do that on the acre. Many just the feet of footprint would be.
Right, right, but they would have to have twelve dwelling units.
Minimum of twelve though.
That's what I'm saying.
Right.
Do we need a minimum? Are we driving density that hard that we, that that new construction has to be twelve dwelling units?
Per acre, so somebody only has half an acre.
True.
I think that having, I think, I, I think that. Because we are looking to drive density in this particular area, that. Having that minimum, I mean, I, I didn't make, I didn't make this minimum up. This is actually. Out of the smart code and um. It's. Enough to start the idea of the development of a neighborhood.
Well.
Whatever you guys would like to do. Those are the arguments.
I don't know, I don't know neighborhood. Description for the density that you're talking about.
I think it depends on how it's designed. If you're just looking at flunking an apartment building on our side. That's a very different. Kind of thing than, and I talk to developers about this all the time, and I'm first one to pull out a room of trace and. Pencils and pens. We've uh, and I will sit there and help them look at things a little differently. Try and look at how they can arrange what they've got. The space they have with, in a way that is um helps to create. Something other than just an apartment building. Both in terms of the relationship to the street, in terms of. You know, there's a big difference between, you had a, like a pocket neighborhood with cottages, small cottages, sort of in a U shape. Very different feel in that center. Um, and just, I'm just asking you to imagine this particular one. Very diff, you know, you can imagine, you know. The, and it's, you know, association quit out or something there in the summer, or. Easier to watch somebody's kids while, you know, you watch my kids for a minute while I. Go inside and do whatever, or off the other, or whatever. There's a more, there are more and less neighborly configurations. And so it's, the use of the possibility for that lower density. To be able to create that.
That's, that's what I'm saying. I think twelve doesn't allow for low enough density.
Too high.
Too high for them.
Okay. Okay.
And I guess if we're basing it on market, like say it was four or six or something is the minimum. But market demand would allow them to explore up to.
They could do, they could do.
Four stories.
They could, they could do more, but.
Based on. This question is, can we do that?
Right, right, well, yeah, well, well, I mean, it's, it's like, are we, are we? Are we unnecessarily stripping them to force, right, bigger developments than people will wanna do, right? And so that, so I mean, let's see, what, I mean, if you had any discussions you have with, with people. You know, in terms of projects that they wanna do, it's just.
Developers are usually looking for as many units on the parcel as possible, so. The question is, what's the configuration and what is there? Like, how, how is it configured on something that?
They will likely propose more. But I'm saying that if, if for some reason they had a good idea, and it was less dense than twelve dwelling unit per acre.
There is a way, I mean, they could, if they had a good idea, the, then the answer would be. And we can talk about the possibility of variance. Those use variances that are contemplated, yes.
So, so reduce the minimum and let them figure it out. If you say they won't build it unless it's a certain number of.
No, 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 I'm not saying that.
You, no, you, you are, you're saying that the developers are looking for more density. And so if it's unlikely that my situation in my head will ever come about, then it's not a problem.
I agree, no problem changes.
Yeah, that's what I'm just saying. I don't wanna shackle somebody with a good idea that is two stories of. Awesome commercial use on the strip and. Four luxury condos above, or something like that, you know?
I, I can see your point, because we're looking at um. A lot of smaller apartments that are being proposed at this time. So there are only so many big houses in the city. And if somebody wants to rent a luxury. Two thousand square foot apartment, then it is gonna be less than one million.
Now, with some of the smaller lots, uh, for two. Some of the existing, you just. Existing commercial space, they wanna require twelve.
Sure.
They could do a, whatever number is.
Add a story, add two apartments, now they're only at three stories. Add a story, add two apartments, now they're only at three stories, but three twelve dwelling units. You're gonna have four for your quarter acre.
Six, four?
I mean, you said, you have to have a minimum?
Nope.
I would be in favor of.
Really beyond market and on the developer coming. It's building.
Still, yeah, really, and, you know, again, like you said, the likelihood is going to be a certain amount of density because of the practicality of developing that building and and then the rest of it comes down to approval.
So the only difference this says twelve units as of right is a minimum. So what if we had up to twelve as of right, and after that you got?
Perhaps I needed definition of as of.
That's what I was just gonna ask. Um, it's without having to come to the commission, or we could specify that they only need a site plan so they don't need a public hearing. Oh, sorry, which category? Or we take it up, I'm, I am fine with any of those.
I do, and maybe it just has to do with the fact we're only seeing, you know, a small portion of the this table, I mean, I mean, all the theme of the categories approval.
Well, I, I think, I, I, I guess the, the most important thing to, 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 trying to have to fall on is the, is the high end on the density, right?
I agree.
That's the, that's where we really want to be cons, be most concerned is that if we do dense, you know, or we want to put a hundred and twenty, five hundred square foot apartments in an, on an acre or something, and, you know, we don't want to, we don't want to see that happen, so we're from a density perspective, the, the biggest, the biggest concern for community in the commission would be on the high end.
Right.
Like the limit, the, limit the high end, on the low end, it's, you know, seems unlikely that people kind of propose things with, with low density overall, I mean, you may get, may it happen occasionally, but in special circumstances, but the general drive if you stay in this, this, but more
Right.
As many units as.
That's, that's certainly one.
And that's, that's what you see.
Do we have that many lots or whatever in that acreage area size?
Um.
In that commercial?
There's a pretty wide variability.
Yes, I agree. I'm looking at the red areas.
Yeah, it's, they're, they're it's an, it's not like it's platted out like a subdivision, which is actually, can lend itself to actually and somewhat athletic and very interesting. Sorry. You know, set of design, so you don't have the same building function. But I'm happy to scratch out the low end.
Okay. Um. The, the height we want to, like, the height things, so the minimum is not two stories.
Right, I think that's very, very.
The, I, I think actually the current at maximum is thirty five feet. In the G C.
Yeah.
Yeah. Um, but we certainly want to, we want to, you know, we want to increase that. Now, the, this, the max height of seventy five, six stories, but that's probably only by special permit.
Correct.
So we need to somehow specify that, that it's a, you know, it's a four story maximum. Up, up, and then six stories is a special permit, five or six stories is a special permit, if it makes sense to say that in there, or is it? I just don't like that, like, someone saying, well, your regulations say I can go to six stories.
Right, but there is, I will add
Right, you, you would be better.
Yeah, no, it's usually the way that it's time is fourteen feet finished floor to finished floor for the first floor, that would accommodate any of your mixed use over time. And then twelve feet finished floor to finished floor would accommodate your H V A C systems and your structure. And give you eight to ten foot floor height, uh, ceiling heights. So it's thirty six plus fourteen four stories.
So are you saying you still want to apply an accident fine? You want to leave that scratch?
I prefer using numbers in feet for, of, for height of buildings rather than the number of stories.
Okay.
It's there are a lot fewer arguments about, well, I want to do a six story building and I want everything stories, fourteen feet, so, and then you end up with, you know, the equivalent of a nine story building, that isn't one. So that's why.
Yep.
That's why that, in the definitions, there'd be the fourteen and then twelve, and then.
That fits in, so five, twelve is, gives you the seventy.
And those are standard protection.
Okay. All right. The, we don't currently have anything about outbuild constraints, right, so that's those.
Right.
That's new. The building massing.
The building massing, um, looking at impervious surface, it would, um.
I would, so I would go building a park.
That was called building parking, if you've got a lot of sidewalk, walkways on your property, um, it's, you know, if the rain falls and it can go into the ground, counts as impervious. And so capping that at eighty percent is pretty typical for I think what we're all looking at in terms of the level of density and so you know, trying to get enough that's there, but also enough building, but not have it be over run with stormwater.
Okay, that, and that would include buildings in the old building.
Uh, yes.
That's max eighty percent of pervious surface. Um, any questions on lot with min max or frontage, that kind of stuff, that's is the, is the hundred foot max width, is that?
So you don't get a gigantic building, monolithic building that looks like factory. It's pretty standard number as a not every place has frontage apartments, but the one thing that we, that I would recommend is that we have the build out number, which means we look at the bottom at sixty percent on this second grouping up for the last one. That is sixty percent of building across the front, because the goal is to create a street edge that helps to start defining the street itself. Because we, although we don't look at aesthetics, we can't look at aesthetics, what we can do is look at where these buildings are on a parcel, and then how they relate to each other across the street next door, and then what effect that has on the public realm between those buildings. And that, more than anything in my professional opinion, is the most important thing.
So the, so that means that front of the building, we have the upper sixty percent of, of width of the lot.
Right, width of the lots, and it doesn't have to be that would be, that would be minimum.
That's the main point.
Now, what?
Oh, I see.
What, it doesn't have to all be building. Very clear, there are ways to put street walls up, there's ways to put trellising up, there, you can put shrubbery or trees up. But the goal in part is to not have people just looking into a parking lot. Is the best example I can give you. But there are lots of ways to make up that sixty percent.
And the max would be eighty percent. You don't have a max for build out.
You actually, right, you could go to a hundred percent in theory. For instance, if you had an underground garage, you drove underground, the whole building, it would be based upon what your side yard set. If you had zero side yard set.
So there, you couldn't get a hundred percent, don't have the side yard setbacks.
Correct.
Okay, we're, we're, but we'll call for a side yard setback of zero.
So that's.
Which, which I, I think was in the, in the, the current, correct me if I'm wrong, current minimum side yard setback is no, no requirement, except eight feet where, where a lot of lots of residences.
Sure. Yeah, well, the zero allows you to still do separate parcels, but real front building.
Okay.
Um, should, should we, um?
I'm set for one thing, just in relation to that. You'd probably be less likely to have that happen if you had property owners that were not the same next to each other. We do know that we have lots of property in this area where property has been assembled by the same owner.
Sure.
So having, being able to give that owner flexibility to do something that is more than the hundred, I mean, they, what, their, whatever their property is, is grandfathered in, it's just if they was in most cases either subdivided or assembled. Which doesn't happen much within the city, is my experience. And again, it's the opportunity for some creative design.
Okay, um, the other, the other, I guess, so the question, the questions I started about the setbacks were, you know, right now, we, we say, except the eight, you can need an eight foot side yard minimum setback where you've been in a residential zone and a fifteen foot setback where, you know, a rear setback where that's a residential zone, would it make sense to keep those? I mean, where, I mean, so, some of these parcels, there are a few of them that may back up, back up to residential zones.
But then it's there, if they back up, it's their rear yard that gets the. Sorry, this is really.
Pictures are good.
So this is all a G seven, all of these parcels?
G sevens.
Upside. G C. Um. Two streets intersecting. If this is all G C and this is a residential zone, this is a rear yard setback, and this is a side yard setback. So it's the rear yard that would govern on this parcel.
Right, and it, so that's, so that's what I'm saying, like, you're lining it out, that's what he's saying. You're, you're saying that, that, that parcel that's, uh, on the, the lower, lower street, that one, if you line out fifteen foot setback, they could build right up to that property line there. Up to the top, top line there, right there.
This part they couldn't, because there's a rear yard setback.
Right, right, now we're saying it's five feet. I, that's what I'm saying, we right, just, right now, it just says rear five feet, doesn't say anything about it being bigger if it's a residential zone behind. That's, what I'm saying is, should we, should we, should we incorporate that, except, that exception that says it's got to be more when, when it's adjacent to a residential zone? That, that was, that's my question.
Thank you.
Does that make, make sense to folks that they want to I, I think bigger buffer when a residential zone?
Well, my mind goes back in the, fortunately wasn't in the G C's zone. Was the, the corner, the road project, the Benham Road project, was that one house, that would have been his side. Of the house.
The.
Yeah, the, the, the Black Corners project.
Yes, Black Corners project, that would have been the side, and it would have been zero.
If that had been in the C zone, that's correct.
Right, and it, and so, again, on the side, on the side, our current.
That's not fair.
On the side, our current says, except for eight foot feet have been in plus residential zone, if we want to keep that as well, I mean, those are the two things I always wondered, if we want to keep those exceptions where we, in those cases where we, you know, where you apply the residential zone, that will, that will need more space. Makes sense.
So my question is, what is, is eight feet the right number? And the reason I'm asking is can barely get a car into eight feet. If you're looking at having a driveway with place to park, you want something more like twelve. I wouldn't go higher than twelve in this area just because you want people to be cautious going in and out, and if it's the narrower you go to fifteen, are gonna, you go two ways and you get.
Well, you're saying setback from a residential property in the, on the side. That's assuming that on that side, that the developer intends for some vehicle passage down the side.
It leaves them the option. Or, I, I'm not, I'm just saying this is what these things generally to be, with eight feet. I can squeeze my car into any parking space, but there are a lot of people who can't do that, so what I'm saying is for most people, that does not, that wouldn't accommodate a car, let's just keep that in mind when we're thinking about what that side yard should be.
I, I hear what you're saying, I think that the setback is not for the benefit of the commercial developer, it is for the next door resident. I don't know that a two story single family home and a six story, you know, mixed use development building, um, I don't know if, if eight feet or twelve feet or a hundred feet would be looked upon favorable for the next door property, but, you know, at, at the minimum, like, you're saying eight feet, the developer's got to imagine whether or not the The developer's gotta imagine whether or not they intend to use that side for passing or parking. Eight is just the minimum, they could take it. The eight is just normal room for the. Well, the residence residential property is gonna have its own original setback property. His property line, but.
Yeah, so I'm so 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 I guess my question is, do we wanna put some number in there, you know, there's an exception. So it's not zero if there's a residential.
If we have we have five for the rear. Discuss it when it comes forward. Or we could just not scratch out those.
Yeah, we can just leave the the eight being fifteen foot exceptions, you know, of the zero and five plus the eight and fifteen foot exceptions. It's not, it's probably more likely to happen in rears.
Well, I did that exact example. Fifteen foot rear setback restriction and front edge setback might squeeze that to the point where that particular property. Isn't a good choice for a hundred foot wide, six story, you know, full fit, so. Start the the whittling from there until you develop something that can pick in those dimension.
That I mean that's not a reason. Put some pepper popper in for the residential. And I guess my other. Oh, the outbuildings part of this has got also got some setback things.
What the outbuilding. What this does is it keeps a garage from being in the front. Or. What you know, a shed or whatever, it pushes it behind the facade of whatever the main building.
So at at worst, you could have a twenty foot tall. Outbuilding with three feet to the property behind.
Correct. And and. The three feet. A three foot rear um and in some cases side. Setback for an outbuilding is very common. And the best example I can give you is. If you have a lot that has a garage in the back, detached garage. The bigger you make the setback, the more you're pulling that garage into what could be. Living space, you know, entertainment space, more grass to mow, however you wanna look at it.
I had to give fourteen for my garage.
The other thing is it'll it gives you space to maintain that garage.
Okay.
I don't know how big the the question is really, I think. How big a difference does? Doesn't make three feet to four feet.
I yeah, I mean just from this discussion, I'm satisfied taking back the setbacks for um side yard and rear yard.
No, I I think we already covered it. Unstrike out the. Keep those restrictions, keep those keep those exceptions for properties of for a buddy for a buddy.
You okay with that?
Yeah.
Or did you have another another?
No, you whatever, you know, the consensus to this, I I just don't want it.
You don't want right up against the residential.
Cause we ran into that with.
Yeah, that was.
The last developer where he remember he's touched back more to give the resident more 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 yard.
Yeah, that was, yeah. That's. I I think we should, we should. Protect it, any any resident buddy residential property owners. That was, I think I had to say. Anybody have anything else on the other comments? Mr. Rice, anything?
Yeah, nothing further right now, thank you.
Thanks. All right. So we're gonna we're gonna move forward with this and come back to it in September. What we discussed, good. All right, um back to the agenda. So let's see, report of commission, any commissioners, anything to report?
I received a phone call and heard you. On my cell phone. From an agency. That was doing a study on. The demographic makeup of the planning and zoning commission. And I said, well, who do you represent? And I'm in Vermont, I'm self phoning. I said, do you represent a state agency or federal agency? Uh no, and she mentions some private group. And I said, well, I said, I think you should contact. The planner for the for the city. That that planner should have demographics that you're looking for, he wanted an interview. So I I just left it at that, I said, like I I really don't feel comfortable. I suggest. And she had indicated that he had called the town. Clerk. Who went on and got, uh cause I said, how did you get my phone? That's where where it came from, so I I obviously didn't receive a call from this individual.
I will tell you that there are.
This is doing demographics as far as.
Yeah, I have gotten some emails about studies that are being done about different things and. Conrad called me about us an email he got about a study. I I don't. My feeling is if it doesn't have. Seal on it from. West government state Connecticut or some other municipality, I know that I don't have to respond.
Well, even at that, that even if they she had indicated that she wanted to represent the state of the federal, I still would recruit.
It's weird to for them to do.
But you gave her your social and your.
Entities of looking at. Number municipalities are reporting that they're having hard time filling because they um positions and commitments. So there was an effort being done by a group of people to kind of just get a general feel and. An understanding of what each municipality that he was dealing with, um whether they had the vacancies and they paid. Politics, but like you said, I I would forward them to Leslie um regardless of this commission.
If it's C P M, I know C P M. And the one actually I googled the one that Conrad gave me. It was. There were two organizations. You know, I just did it out of curiosity, there were two organizations and one of. One had the what, you know. Organization for, you know, inclusion and equity or whatever, and the other one was equity and inclusion, that's like.
That those are some large words that that she used. And uh my mind at this point wants to say that I. I thought she mentioned Norwich area. Well, whatever, but I I thought I I'd mentioned to get anyone else to see the. Expected to receive a phone call on myself.
But but I mean, it's good to bring that up because I think I think in general, those, you know, those big happy job people break down to Leslie and I heard. You know, then, you know, that's the official, you're not the city official. Uh anybody else have anything? Uh I um I went to the I attended the regional planning meeting in the July the seventeenth and then. Couple topics that came up there, there was a lot of discussion about short term rentals and what communities were doing about it. Um it's a, you know, it's it is, as I mentioned, it's a big issue in the town and there and uh. That the I think the city's approach has been to s- see what the town is gonna do and and does that make sense for the city to follow the towns? The same forces the town takes.
Yeah, there's a really good reason that we haven't done anything on it, and that is. I don't know what to do that is actually legal. There are so many solutions that people will bring up that just simply are not legal. They either violate their housing act, they violate the constitution, where do you draw the line, is it a? A thirty day rental, a one week rental, a six month rental. It's very complicated and there's. Sort of a, like the mayor and I have talked about this with some frequency and some depth and. We are waiting to see what the town does decide to do and. Also don't feel. Like we have to. Do anything right now because we don't, better to do nothing when we don't know. What to do than to, I mean, I've I've researched this, I've spent ridiculous amount of time researching this. Things are getting overturned all the time. And and the bigger problem is frankly. Behavior is the issue. When you ask somebody why they, you know, what's their problem with having somebody. Yeah, I mean, there are other issues too, but that's the biggest problem. Drinking, parties. Cars, whatever. Other issues too, people like to know who they're living next to and some sense of. Lack of transparency, but um. Then they don't wanna call the police about it. And it's the police that are. There's the entity deal with it and to call me the next morning and say there was a party next door last night. What are you gonna do about it?
Well, I'll go I'll go to the next one.
I will say I dealt I dealt with this in depth with student housing when I was moving. Um and it was a nightmare and. The student housing administration must have been written for hand in. Before I got there, but they were the ones that had been adopted and then. Uh amended a little bit while I was there were thrown out in four weeks, so. Which shouldn't surprise me at all, I mean. They were living on borrowed time with it.
Well, the the police chief. Both city and halfway chiefs have have been on record recently at the council and on the end meetings discussing. Whether there's need for ordinance and things like that and. Not not to discuss whether that's. You know, good or bad, but they but both have said absent noise ordinance, absent other ordinances. They have standing statutes and ordinances that they can use at the disposal with discretion to. Handle, you know, disorderly conduct. Reach a piece, all kind of things. So they, again, not to speak on about the ordinance in particular, but like. The chiefs uh felt they were sufficiently armed with. With, you know.
They have to know when a problem is occurring.
And it can get difficult that that's an office of responding to them. What's the noise level, what do you need turned down? What's loud to you, what's loud to us, or to that neighbor or this neighbor, it can be a.
So they.
So this is just a general question, but you know, um I've seen a lot of them come up lately in the neighborhood. And if the city doesn't act. Regulations regarding short term, are they considered grandfathered in, because some of these houses were bought strictly for the purpose of. It's a really good question and it is. There's a lot of nitty gritty, did they register with the state, are they? No, I the reason that I say that is that one argument that can be made is. If they haven't been registered, they're not legal, whatever they need to be. Then whatever they're doing that is not legal ends when somebody who's renting leaves. That's an argument.
Like you said, it's very, very convoluted when you get into the law aspect of it.
Absolutely.
Because but you interpret, somebody else interprets it in a way. And vice versa.
It's very unlikely that it would be done if there was only make the ordinance. He just I just had a meeting with the mayor and the new chief and the captain and. We all agreed that an ordinance was the way to go, and so that's.
And that had been the recommendation of the council of governments, but I think they're they're re-studying it. And but the town is gonna is gonna present a zoning ordinance, a zoning. Regulation, I believe in August is what.
They presented one several months ago, I said.
Yeah, I think they got some feedback and we're gonna come back with an updated version, but so so anyway, so that's. That's kind of the funny, that's the approach to get the town appears to be taking, but they are concerned about. The fact about the grandfather issue. And the fact they could have so many of these already in existence that. One comment was that, you know, you may be able to regulate them, but you cannot give it. This, you know, that's I guess some believable opinions and, you know, kind of. Head in that direction, regulate. Anyway, that was, so there was a lot of discussion about that. The other thing that came up was the commissioner training requirements, so the. And my takeaway from it was that in twenty twenty three, you have to have four hours per year. Like that's this year's requirement, but then going forward after twenty twenty three, you have to have four hours every four years. Right, that was the newest.
Yeah, I think they there was a.
There was a change to the law that made that that made that change, but it didn't change the twenty twenty three required, so. Um and one of those hours, you have it has to be about affordable house. And we were talking about, a lot of people attended the Connecticut parcel city training, but that only had half an hour of. Affordable housing training. So it's all for, you know, for those of us who went to that, I think we're probably covered for everything but the affordable house.
As I get notifications of these things, I. Pass them on to you, I haven't gotten anything in quite a while.
Still trying to figure out what's going on, but, but anyway, that's, that was the, that was, that was the takeaway from. So, that was, that was, there was only a quorum there, so, couldn't do anything else, but let's, let's start this, let's get this thing. Um, any public communications or anything from?
The only thing I have is a, um, I'm sorry, I don't think I wanna say.
It's okay. Perfect.
And, uh, developer, trust to be building a holding, that, I've met with his partner a few times, so.
These are good changes to make. They will, uh, uh, create applications for building in the areas you're interested in, if you make the changes.
Thank you. Um, reporter stack, anything?
We have a, um, Bridge Street Gateway Workshop that is going to be on the twenty-third this morning, six a.m. at six.
Um, Seventy Bridge Street?
That was denied, um, per the commission's directive. Um, I, the applicant came in on Thursday at two o'clock, the deadline was Friday, and, um, the, there were several things that had not been included in the revised paperwork. The very first thing that was, that the commission had said the deadline, um, was a scale drawing of the site. And the very first page of what I got said not to scale, do not measure. So, I mean, you know, made me sad to make that call because nobody likes to do that, but, um, I also quite confident that it was the right thing to do.
Yeah, I agree, and so, I, I don't think you got anything that you asked for.
Yeah.
Um, and, uh, you, you also mentioned, I think at the last meeting, you had a, a president was gonna come in and talk to you about the feeling about projects that, was that, did that happen?
Oh, yeah, that did happen. It was fine. She left happy. She's not building it.
Yeah, no, it was more about just getting a general idea of how how development processes work when, um, community members are able to come in, how we do public hearings and accessory, so it was just more of understanding what that process was.
Great, all right.
But it was lovely conversation.
Good, okay, um, anything else?
Don't.
All right.
City Day was great. Give away free. Saw the plan on. It was great.
Cause you did a, well, you did a presentation.
Yeah, so you had to participate in the presentation when you were able to.
Yep, thanks for, for representing us on City Day. Um, so executive session, so motion to adjourn at eight forty-five, Mr. Streeter. Second, Mr. Russ, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you. We're adjourned.
See you, Terry.
All right.
Take care, Terry.
Two solid hours for barely having a quorum.